Okay, mic check, okay? Good evening, welcome to the 2015 Council Candidate Debate in Milltown. And my name is Alicia Morgan and I'm with Rutgers University Libraries and I have volunteered to moderate tonight's session. I'd like to first thank our broadcaster, Russ Einbinder, and the Milltown Channel 15 Public Access Station, as well as acknowledge our Rob Rockoche, our press representative from Milltown's online news source, TapInto.net, and acknowledge our timekeeper, Russ Tangan, who will be helping to conduct tonight's debate. With me here tonight are our four candidates, and via a flip of the coin, we have elected to start with the first Republican candidate, and then what we will be doing is alternating, starting with the Republican candidate, then the next Democrat, and the next Republican, and the next Democrat, both for the opening, closing statements, and then for the questions as we proceed through the evening. So, at this point, the one thing we didn't say is who goes first among the Republicans through the coin flip are going first?
I'll start.
So, Rich?
I'll start.
Okay. And actually, at this point, let me read our candidate's biography, please. Our first candidate who will be speaking is Richard Ravelinski. He is 34 years old, the youngest of our candidates tonight. He is a municipal utility and construction professional and a lifelong Milltown resident. The son of Jackie and Joe Ravelinski, Richard grew up enjoying the quality of life that we come to expect in Milltown. Now, along with his wife Jennifer, he is the proud father of Everett Grant Ravelinski, age three, Adeline Alicia Ravelinski, age one. Richard attended Parkview School and Joyce Kilmer School before matriculating to Spotswood High School in 1996, where he excelled in both academics and sport. Upon graduation in 2000, Richard attended Rutgers University, earning his Bachelor of Science in Environmental Policy with extensive coursework in engineering and political science. After graduation, Richard worked at CME Associates where he oversaw several construction projects, the most noteworthy being the water main clearing and lining project in Milltown, and the construction and startup services of an electrical power generation facility in Elizabeth. Richard left CME Associates in 2010, just prior to marrying his wife Jennifer when he began his career in construction management. Richard was working in Brooklyn, New York, where he and his team oversaw the construction of a $100 million storm water and sewage pumping station. At that time, Richard continued his pursuit of higher education, and in the winter of 2010, Richard earned his Master Degree of Science from Stevens Institute of Technology in the field of construction management. Richard and Jennifer bought their home in Milltown on Elmwood Drive in July 2012. One month later, their son Everett was born, and they began planting their own Milltown roots. In 2012, Richard joined the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, where he still serves to this day. In 2013, Richard began working at Kmetz Incorporated, a specialty utility contractor in East Brunswick, where his duties include project management, business development, and estimating. Richard also serves as a committee member of the New Jersey Chapter of Water for People, where his volunteer efforts support fundraising activities to provide clean drinking water for people around the world. Richard is honored to be here tonight to earn your support as councilman in 2016, and looks forward to maintaining Milltown's character and charm of yesterday and today for years to come. Richard, we now have your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and for those of you watching at home, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to join us while we discuss the future of Milltown. Now that you've had the opportunity to learn a bit about me from our moderator, I would like to expand upon that with some further personal details. When I first began telling people I was running for Borough Council, I got two general responses. First, there were the whimsical responses, such as, "You don't have anything better to do with your time?" And then there were the more direct responses, asking why I was running for Borough Council. I believe residents were asking me that for a predetermined set of issues that I would be ready to discuss and had responses ready. However, my response was, and still remains, that I am running for Borough Council because I love this town. And the more I thought about the first question, I realized too, that despite the day-to-day busyness of our residents, Milltown's real charm comes from the tireless efforts of our volunteers. My parents moved to Milltown before I was born. My brother and I grew up on a quiet cul-de-sac on the north end of town. I grew up in a town where my parents didn't have to worry about us staying out late in the summer, riding our bikes to other neighborhoods, or playing in the woods with our friends. They took comfort in knowing it was a safe community where neighbors and friends looked out for each other and cared for one another. There were always plenty of kids and parents around to keep a watchful eye. And being a small town, they were quickly introduced to nearly everyone. Milltown truly was and remains a great place to raise a family. In 2011, my wife and I began our search for a home. As a young couple with college loans, Milltown seemed a bit out of reach. We considered some of the surrounding communities, but none felt like home. In 2012, we were fortunate enough to find an affordable home in the town we loved and jumped at it. My wife, being from Wisconsin, immediately fell in love with the small-town charm and close-knit sense of a community that was present around every corner in Milltown. We were both thankful and very excited to set our roots and begin our future in Milltown. When we moved into our new home, we were greeted like family by our new neighbors, some of whom grew up with me and remembered me from my childhood days. I soon realized what it meant to be a homeowner in Milltown. Through casual conversations around town, I realized that the issues and concerns I had were also the issues and concerns of my neighbors. Coincidentally, when I spoke to my parents, who are still Milltown residents, I was reminded many of these issues are the same that my father fought to change when he ran for Borough Council in the late 1980s. While we've managed to maintain our wholesome, small-town values through the years, it's clear that we failed to take steps towards addressing other key aspects of maintaining the borough. In 2013, I joined the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, which gives you the opportunity to see how much this town means to so many people, and how the efforts of a few can really impact the lives of many. And I'm being told that's enough time.
Thank you. Okay, on the Democratic side, which of you gentlemen would like to go first? Neil? Or Nick, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, let me go ahead and read your biography, so we can associate what I say about you with you. First, again, is Nick Legati. He is 49 years old and has been employed by Quanta U.S. Holdings for the past 11 years as their U.S. Systems and Facilities Manager. He is a graduate of DeVry University, North Brunswick. Nick has served on multiple Milltown committees and boards over the past several years, including the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Recreation Advisory Committee, the mayor's designate to the Middlesex County Housing and Community Development Committee, July Fourth Committee Volunteer, Milltown Shade Tree Committee, and Milltown Recreation Softball and Basketball Coach. Nick is an active member of the Milltown Democratic Organization, having served as its secretary and chairman. Nick has lived in Milltown for 15 years, with his wife Joy and daughters Melissa and Elizabeth. Nick and Joy chose Milltown to raise their children because of the reputation of the great community Milltown is. Nick has dedicated countless volunteer hours during his children's time at Parkview, Joyce Kilmer, and Spotswood Schools to ensure successful trips, fundraisers, and school events. While serving on the Shade Tree Committee, Nick was instrumental in the removal of 75 trees. As mayor's designate to Middlesex County Housing and Community Development Committee the last three years, Nick helped secure badly-needed funds for the Milltown Senior Center. Nick is running for council with the goal of securing the future of Milltown not only for his children, but for all of Milltown residents. Nick enjoys the small-town feel, the way of life here, and combined with his technology and organizational skills, is confident that he can keep Milltown the greatest little town in the land. And now, Mr. Legati.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nick Legati, and I am running for Borough Council. That statement holds a lot of weight for me. It is not something I take lightly. I have been asked quite often, why would I want to take on all the responsibilities that go along with the job? I can answer that question with one word and then elaborate on it for you. The word is passion. I have the passion to make sure Milltown has the right leaders to take this town into the future. I have two wonderful daughters that I would like to make sure have the same opportunities to raise their families here if they choose to. I have the passion to get all the details of pressing issues concerning the borough and help make the best decisions for all Milltown residents. In my current position, I am referred to as the Answer Man. If there is an issue, all my coworkers know, I will take the time to do the research, get all the information needed, and come up with the best solution possible. I have a passion to work with Milltown employees, so that we can ensure the best job is getting done from A to Z, keeping both employees and residents in mind. I have a passion to protect Milltown residents, infants to seniors. I would like to be your voice. Please allow me to start the process of balancing out our current Borough Council and not allowing one political party to pass through any ideas based on political gain or agenda. I could go on and on about my passion to be a Milltown councilman, but the bottom line is, I know that I and my two running mates, Randy Farkas and Mayor Eric Steber, are the best candidates for the job. Together with their local government experience and all of our tenacious personalities, promise you, the Milltown residents, we will work tirelessly and always put you and your safety first in all of our decisions. I can assure you that if elected, Milltown will not be disappointed with the passion in which I serve the job of Milltown councilman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Residi, if you could offer, I would like to introduce you and then have your opening statement. Neil Residi is 47 and has been a resident of the borough for the last seven years. He has been employed by the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office for the past 15 years and is currently assigned to the Transportation Division. Neil has also been assigned to the Middlesex County Special Operations Response Team and the Urban Area Security Initiative Team. In 2007, Neil began training for deployment to serve his country as a National Guardsman in the United States Army. Neil was sent to Little Rock, Arkansas, to become a squad-designated marksman, where he finished top in his class. After several months of further extensive training, he was sent to the northwest region of Iraq. There, he was attached to the first Special Forces Group, where he provided security during meet-and-greets with the villagers and the mayors of several towns. Neil was tasked with the responsibility for initiating, organizing, and training 14 Iraqi policemen for special operations and missions. Neil and his team of two infantrymen accomplished over 170 missions and were successful in the capture of three high-value targets. During his 13-month deployment, he received several medals, including the Army Commendation Medal with Valor. Neil received his honorable discharge in December 2014. After returning home in 2009, Neil became the commander of the North Brunswick American Legion, post 459, until 2012. As commander, Neil brought the membership up from six to over 100 active members. On the verge of losing its charter, Neil led a successful membership drive, bringing the membership to over 100 active members, establishing a ladies auxiliary, and the Sons of the American Legion. Neil was then elected as vice commander of the Middlesex County American Legion. During this time, Neil chaired the New Jersey Employer Recognition Support Committee and was also a member of the Middlesex County Veterans Advisory Board. Neil has been on council since 2012, and has received bipartisan support in being elected to the position of council president for two of his three-year terms, three terms. Neil currently chairs the Public Works Department, where he is diligently working alongside the superintendent to develop a working plan for a new public works building. He also sits in the Finance Committee, Utilities Committee, and is liaison to the Board of Education. Neil previously chaired the Shade Tree Committee. Neil currently resides on Albert Avenue and has four grown children and two grandchildren. So now, Mr. Residi.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, family, friends, and residents of Milltown. My name is Neil Residi, and I am seeking reelection to council. Over the course of my term, I have gained bipartisan support and was voted council president for two out of my three years. To me, that shows how good government works. We have put political party affiliation aside and focused on what's right for the residents. We have worked as a team, rolled up our sleeves, and went to work. In my opinion, this current council has accomplished more in such a short time than councils have in the past. We have nearly completed the electrical substation, as well as securing 50 Washington Ave, formerly known as the Susan Hutton Building, for the relocation of the immiscible garage. As chairman of the Public Works Committee, I have had numerous meetings with Mike McClellan from CME and Ralph Jaznawski, our supervisor for Public Works, to discuss our options, whether to retrofit the existing building, to demolish it, or build a new one that truly fits our needs. With that, I will be looking up to team with the Environmental Commission and the Green Team to gain their innovative ideas, such as installing solar panels on the roof, collection of rainwater, impervious surfaces, et cetera, to the building project. I am also looking into any and every grant that may be available to reduce our out-of-pocket cost. Since taking office, my passion has always been our downtown area. The Milltown Revitalization Committee and I have been diligently working to develop and implement ideas to restore and revitalize Main Street. We are close to entering into an agreement with a private donor to financially support our contractual obligations with NJIT. If reelected, I will continue to do the right thing for Milltown. I will continue with my common-sense approach towards problems and solutions, and will continue to keep Milltown moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point in the evening, we now move to Bob Rockoche? Nope. Oh, good grief, I am so sorry. I'm sitting here looking at this and holding it and going, I'm just in a hurry.
Not a problem.
I apologize, and again, we'd like to introduce Randy Farkas, who is, again, your fourth candidate for Borough Council. Randy Farkas is 55 years old and has resided in Milltown for the last 23 years. Randy is a graduate of Woodbridge High School and has completed coursework at Eastern New Mexico University and the College of New Jersey. He is currently employed by Clean Energy Fuels as a senior technician. Randy previously served two terms as a Milltown councilman, from 2007 to 2009, and 2012 to 2014. During his prior time on council, he held the position of chairman of the Utilities Committee for four of those years. In that capacity, Randy was instrumental in obtaining the land for our new electric substation at minimal cost to the residents of Milltown. He has served as chairman of the Finance and Public Works Committees. If elected, Randy will make it a priority to move the public works garage out of the floodplain, as well as to ensure the safe and efficient operation of our new electric substation. Randy's dedication and hard work as a volunteer is well-known throughout the borough. Since 2003, as the co-founder and an integral member of the Haunted River Walk, he has helped raise over $150,000 for the eighth-grade students of Joyce Kilmer School. From 2004 to 2009, Randy served as chairman of the Fourth of July Committee. He has been a member of the Planning Board for numerous years, served on the mayor's anti-vandalism task force, and volunteered as a coach for basketball and softball. In 2009, the United Way of Central New Jersey presented him with their Hometown Hero Award. Randy has been the liaison to the senior citizens for many years. Under his direction, there have been many improvements in senior citizens' center, enhanced programs, and better communication. And now, Mr. Farkas.
Thank you. As we come to the conclusion of another election cycle, it is imperative, now more than ever, for you to give this forum your utmost attention. You will be deciding the future of our town and your future as well, in this upcoming election. The candidates you elect will have a key role in how our town moves forward. Albert Einstein once said, "Experience is knowledge." And experience is needed now, more than ever, as we are at a crucial time. Our substation is near completion, and the testing phase of that project has commenced. Soon, we will take ownership of the substation, and it will be our collective responsibility to ensure that the mistakes of the past will not haunt us in the future. We pay a monetary penalty every time a bad decision is made, not now, but in two or three years. We need to stop mortgaging our future as the debt comes due to pay for those bad decisions. I have played a key role in the acquisition, planning, and design of the substation, both as a member of the Electrical Substation Committee and as the council liaison to the Utilities Department, which I held for four of my six years while on council. I have the knowledge and experience to move our Utilities Department into this new age where we don't rely on unreliable antiquated equipment, and we perform the maintenance required to ensure its efficient operation. We need to take the proactive steps necessary to hire competent individuals to perform the very important task of maintaining our state-of-the-art system. Additionally, our aging water distribution system has gone another year without any upgrade. While a contract was signed last week, the money was allocated more than a year ago. That work will not start until next year, at the earliest, as the cold weather is approaching, and this work can't be performed when the temperature is close to freezing. Let me be very clear about this project. Despite what you are being told, there is no guarantee that this relining will take places advertised. The wall thickness of the water mains and the affected areas need to be checked for corrosion. If it is determined that the water mains can't support the relining, we will have to replace those mains with new pipe, a much more expensive project. The relining project will not solve our water quality issues as designed. A program of replacing the oldest water mains and looping the dead-end portions back into the existing mains must be undertaken. An upgrade of the water utility is the only way to improve the water quality in our town. When you go to the voting booth on Election Day, consider "experience is knowledge." Think about what that means to you as a resident and as a taxpayer. The choice is crystal clear. The team of Eric Steber, Nick Legati, and Randy Farkas will get the job done, first time, every time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to our four candidates for their opening statements. And now, we will have questions from the press, from Bob Rockoche, from TapInto.net.
Thanks, Alicia. Good evening to all four of you. Each of you in your opening statements brought up some things that really kind of strike as important to you. If elected as a councilman, what would be your priority, and how would you go about the process of seeing to it that that priority really gets filled in the manner you see?
At this point, we would start with somebody from the Democratic side and then from the Republican side.
I'll start. I think one of the most important things is the moving of the public works building onto the acquired property. We have gone years with many hours, man-hours, of moving equipment out of the building, back into the building, moving trucks, moving them back, and the time has come to put some real effort into that project. Another issue that is not being talked about too much is the fact that our forced main for our sewer system operates at about 95% capacity. And I can tell you that if you think people were upset when they didn't have electric for a week, just wait for the time to come that they can't flush their toilets. And that water main, I'm sorry, that forced main is about 80 years old, and that time will come. There's no question about it. It's just a matter of when. Let's be proactive and take care of that while we can.
Okay, at this time, would one of you two gentlemen like to respond?
I'll go. First and foremost, I think is our infrastructure. Without the infrastructure, like Randy said, we have nothing. We went without electric, God forbid we go out with water, and it's going to be a tremendous nightmare. This council has continuously beat down CME for new ideas, monies, grants, anything that we can do to possibly help our infrastructure, whether that be one street, two streets, or the whole town. We revisited, or we visited, I should say, the whole town to astronomical costs, but it's something that we seriously have to consider, and that should be our first priority, first and foremost. Second, obviously, is the public works building. We already did the substation, we got that up and out of harm's way. The public works building, we're hoping, should be within the next year or so. And then the quality of life is always just as important. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Legati?
Okay. Priority for Milltown, in my opinion, would be, now that the substation is almost at its completion, I believe that the infrastructure of Milltown is a very important issue. The water quality in Milltown is at a, it's drastically not good. It's brown in some people's homes, and we have to address how we can change that for people so that they don't have that water quality issue anymore. I also believe that our downtown Main Street area is important to the future of Milltown. I believe that if we can try to increase the parking with a plan and get more middle businesses to come in here and be like the area and open up, it'll revive our downtown area as well.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Ravelinski?
Thank you. It seems that most people have focused on the infrastructure here, which thankfully is my forte. As a construction professional and familiar with the water and wastewater industry, I have intimate knowledge of what is required for these projects. And if you think that we are at a crisis point now with spending money, wait until you want to tackle some of those projects incorrectly. As Mr. Farkas did state, the cleaning and lining project will not fix a deteriorated water system. However, there are price savings alternatives, which have leak-free solutions to them, as well as other means to replace a water main. What I would focus on with regard to infrastructure improvements is a capital improvement plan, where we are not focused simply on a water system, but rather gravity sewers, storm sewers, as well as water systems, and perhaps even integrating some electrical improvements during an entire road rebuilding program, step by step, through town.
Thank you. Our next question?
Anybody that knows anything about Milltown automatically thinks of small-town USA. It's part of the charm of Milltown over and above. And we're in changing times right now, and challenging times. How do you envision being able to maintain that small-town quality in these changing times, and what would you do to make sure that you had that in place and keep it that way?
Actually, Mr. Residi?
Sure. As I said in my opening statement, one of my passions is the downtown area. I've been on the Milltown Revitalization Committee for the past three years, and one of our main topics or subjects outside of Milltown Day is that of the downtown revitalization area. We have had numerous meetings with NJIT. We are, like I said, looking for private donations to help offset the cost of the entrance fee, if you will. And with that, they'll send a team of students down here, they'll gather up a booklet, our pros and cons, weaknesses, strengths, ratables, things like that, develop a plan, present it to us, and with that, we can have that home time feeling back, you know, new light shades, new facades on the things, new sidewalks, and keep it that way. And people will be proud of it if we can revitalize it down there.
Okay, Mr. Legati?
I will also say that our current mayor, Eric Steber, has secured a grant for over $350,000 to purchase the post office. And the plan is, which I am fully behind, is to get that building, take it down, grade that area properly, so that it can alleviate some of the flooding for the mill people, and will also serve as additional parking for our downtown businesses, in an essence, attracting them to come here and open up businesses in Milltown. I think that that is the best way we can go forward in our downtown area.
Mr. Ravelinski?
Maintaining the small-town feel of Milltown, it's pretty simple, actually. We're not growing. We have no more room for development in this town. And the people who moved to this town moved to this town because they love this town. They know it's a safe community. They know it's a great place to raise their families. As far as downtown revitalization goes, it's beautiful, as long as we can bring in some additional commerce and help out the small businesses that are in town to draw more people to town. As far as the post office goes, I believe that Milltown's post office does more business than the surrounding communities. And purchasing a building in a floodplain just, to me, doesn't seem like a good idea when we'd have to demolish the building, as well as grade the area. The flooding that affects those residents in the mill isn't a result of that building being there. It's about impervious surfaces upstream. Now, what I'd like to see is the borough post office stay in town and move to an area where the residents don't have to worry about finding their mail six months after a flood.
Okay, very well. And finally, Mr. Farkas.
Thank you. Small-town USA-
Small Town, USA, Milltown is a friendly community, as the sign says when you come in and leave town. Milltown is a friendly community. What's going to continue that small-town feel in Milltown is development of the downtown area. But before that can happen, we need to develop parking. We have to attract people to come to this area. We're not going to attract people by building tattoo parlors and massage parlors and smoke shops. We need to spend the time to put quality businesses into this town that are going to attract people. Once that's done, Milltown needs to decide if we're going to be Somerville, if we're going to be Westfield, if we're going to be Red Bank, or if we're going to create our own identity and be Milltown, a walking community that's friendly throughout the town.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have more questions?
Yeah. I want to tie the two questions I asked together for a moment in terms of prioritization and the things related to the different visions you have and the Small Town, USA feel. It was mentioned that Milltown's not growing anymore. It's not easy to grow. One of the things that's of concern to a lot of residents is, if you're going to undertake these projects, and these are things that are clearly necessary as it relates to infrastructure, how can you reassure the existing residents and future people that want to move to Milltown that they're going to be able to afford it with a tax base that's not going to be through the roof?
Okay. For this question, actually, I would like to start with Mr. Farkas again.
As you know, we're undertaking some aggressive infrastructure projects. The infrastructure is what is the base of the town. The way that can be done is by aggressive grant-seeking. I read in the paper every week that there's a fire department in this town, there's a police department in this town, who get hundreds of thousands of grants, and yet Milltown gets nothing. I believe that's because no one is actually applying. So that is certainly something that needs to be addressed.
Mr. Revulinski?
Tying all those together and the impacts and implications of doing projects when you don't have an expanding tax base is a concern. However, when you look at the municipal taxes, they're equivalent to about your cellphone bill and your cable bill combined every month. They make up a small percentage of what you actually pay in taxes. The rest goes to the county, and it goes towards the school districts. Now, to say that people haven't been seeking grants is something of a slap in the face to the hard work of our current council and those before. I know personally that our council seeks grants regularly to improve the town and to maintain our taxes. In fact, this year, during the budget meetings that were held, we managed to minimize the increase in taxes from a 15-cent increase to only a 2-cent increase. Priorities are always services provided by the borough, seconded by commerce and downtown revitalization. And as we build on the commerce, we will have a greater tax base to manage some of those improvements.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lagotti?
The way you kind of tie those two things together are, and I hate to be repetitive here, are active grant-seeking. It is the way to go to keep everyone's taxes lower. Also, something that was not mentioned is to try and obtain as many low-interest loans that we can possibly get for anything that we bond for in the future. I think doing those two things would alleviate some of the tax point increases that we've had last year, going from 15 points to 2 points. You know, if we do a little bit more grant-seeking and we do a little bit more looking for low-interest loans, we'd be able to achieve that.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Rusidi?
Grant-riding, it's the only way we're to be able to do it. One of the projects we have with NJIT is they will send a team of seven to nine individuals down here and totally dissect our books and everything else, find out where we can save money, where we can put monies aside. And I know, being on the Finance Department, mayoral candidate Ron Dixon has been doing that, has been putting money away for a rainy day, if you will. But most importantly, it's the grant-riding. Grant-riding will tie both of them in, and it'll be less out-of-pocket money for us. This way, stabilizing the taxes.
We have one more question from TapInto.net. Rob?
I want to revisit a question I asked during the mayoral discussion last week. Obviously, Ford Avenue and the development is in the courts. We have no control over how that's all going to play out. If you had the ideal utopian ability to decide what was going to be there, what would it be?
This one, we would ask for one of our Republican candidates first?
I'll field this. It's a great idea to live in a utopian society where we don't have to worry about, you know, mandates from the state on building low-income housing in town, but it's just not a reality. What I would like to see is the same vision, I think, that everyone wants to see. Some commerce, a beautiful waterfront, some small businesses, a couple of residential units for some of our aging population in town, making room for new Milltown residents and their children. But we're in a jam. It's not that easy to just, you know, wave a magic wand and do what we want. We have rules to live by, and we have to take action before it's too late and we're stuck being forced with worse actions.
Thank you. Mr. Lagotti?
Unfortunately, Ford Avenue is in the court system, and it's, we really have very little control over what's potentially going to be there. But if I had to say my best-case scenario of what I would want there would be some senior housing, I guess to, nobody knows what your COA obligation is these days. It keeps changing every month. So some senior housing, some young families to get in there. I don't want to increase the amount of children that it overwhelms our school system. So some nice storefronts, couple of restaurants, some walking paths, a nice, beautiful addition to this wonderful town that I chose to live in.
Thank you. Mr. Rusidi?
I would echo Nick's comments. I think that's what we all want. We have to and will take care of our seniors in this town. So I'd definitely like to see some senior housing there. I'd love to see some restaurants. That ties into my passion with the downtown revitalization area. I'd love to see some, on the street level, some small storefronts, maybe on the second floor, some professional suites, third-floor housing, a couple buildings for senior housing. As far as the COA obligation goes, yes, it does change every day. We can meet that and fulfill the requirements of COA through veterans. It doesn't have to be this term what everyone's scared of is this low-income housing. We can fulfill that with veterans who fought for this country. And if reelected, that's exactly what I'm going to do.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Farkas?
Yes, thank you. But before I start, I'd just like to correct Mr. Revulinski on a point. 23% of your municipal taxes are your municipal taxes. So I don't know who his carrier is, but that's about $1,080 a year, so maybe it's time to look for a new carrier. My utopian vision of what Ford Avenue would be would be a mixed use of commercial, senior housing, one-bedroom, owner-occupied, and a lot of open space. That would be the perfect combination, and as long as the people that live concurrently reside on Ford Avenue are happy with that, I think that would solve all the problems.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, those are all the questions we have from Rob Rockoche from TapInto.net. At this point, we will go for about 20 to 30 minutes on questions that were submitted this evening by our members of the audience. And I've tried to organize them in a bit of an order that seemed to make sense, and I don't know if we'll get through all of them or not, but I hope so. And also, the other piece is, at this point, again, just like the other questions, we will alternate which side starts first, and try to be somewhat random, or at least change the order up of which one of you on each side speaks first. So there we go. On this question, just as a warning, I will ask Mr. Rusidi to go first, but here's the question. If elected, what are some of the initiatives you plan on bringing to the council, and how do you prioritize those initiatives?
Well, prioritizing is to be our infrastructure, first and foremost. Secondly, I'm going to be actively seeking grants that maybe help to reduce the capital improvement costs, out-of-pocket monies for things like that. Being on the council, being on Public Works for the past three years, I've gained some knowledge in that. When I first started, of course, the first year was a learning period. Second and third year, I jumped right into it. And there's several ways, there's several grants out there, CME, as well as this current council is actively seeking those grants.
Are there some initiatives that you plan on bringing to the council, and how would you prioritize the initiatives? I don't want to make sure the question was clear.
Repeat it one more time?
I'm sorry. If elected, what are some of the initiatives you plan on bringing to the council, and how do you prioritize those initiatives?
Again, through my experience.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And next, we have Mr. Farkas.
Sure. I have three initiatives that I would like to tackle based on my experience in the Utilities Department. The first issue would be the water quality in town. As I mentioned in my opening, it's a quality-of-life issue that needs to be addressed. We're taking the preliminary steps, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done. The second issue would be moving the Public Works Building because that has sat way too long in the floodplain. And as, again, I said in my opening statement, it's just very inefficient to try to operate a town with the people who basically are the heart of the town, fighting rainstorms and floods at every turn. The third issue, again, would be the sewer force main, because without that sewer main being done, regardless of what the cost is, again, five years ago, there were 300 people at the American Legion screaming, "I have a feeling there would be 3,000 if that sewer main is not repaired."
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farkas. Next, Mr. Rusidi? I'm sorry, Revulinski? I already talked to you.
What initiatives would I bring to the council? It's hard to say. After talking to residents around town, I know that people are interested in seeing more places for our children to play. More park areas, improved park facilities, that would be just one. Another new initiative may be in the realm of traffic safety. While we've obtained grants for some of the pedestrian crossings in town, I still see children crossing on the way to school dodging cars because people don't pay attention. And the third, I don't know if we need three, but I would definitely focus and prioritize on the other tasks at hand. I wouldn't want to take on too much. I'd want to accomplish something.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question is, please list and... I keep doing, it's awful. I keep trying to move forward, you know? So I apologize. Thank you very much, Mr. Lagotti.
Initiatives that you bring to council shouldn't be hard to say. You should know them, and you should want to do them exponentially. I have some initiatives that I would like to bring to Milltown. I would like to follow up with the infrastructure projects that are in this town. That's an initiative that needs attention right away. There has to be initiative of controlling the spending that the Borough Council over the last two years has approved. We need to cut that down. We need to analyze what they're spending their money on, and not just willy-nilly spend bucks on anything that anybody wants within the borough. We need to move the Public Works garage over to a secure place that is out of a flood zone. And make no mistake about it, the post office is not going to be there. That building is up for sale, and it will be empty. If we can get it for a close-to-nothing and have a project to improve our downtown area and get additional parking, that's an initiative that I would like to follow through on as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And now, our second question. I'll ask a question, then I'll pick on Mr. Ricosi for his...
Too many Rs. We understand.
I don't know what this is tonight, you know? I'm just getting...
I'm not running today, Alicia, but that's okay.
That's okay. Mr. Revulinski will go first. The question is, how important are volunteers to the town? And what would you do to encourage more people to volunteer?
As I said in my opening statement, volunteers are really the lifeblood of Milltown. We have so many different civic organizations that are fueled by volunteers, whether it's the Cub Scouts bringing our youth to learn about the world around them, and duty to our children, or the Fourth of July Committee. Volunteer recognition, I think, is a big part of town. I think it's something that we should really focus on. I believe that we should develop something of a monthly volunteer recognition program and at least acknowledge the hard efforts of all the people who make this town what it is and such a great place to live.
Okay. At this point, we will go to Mr. Lagotti.
Volunteers in Milltown. Just ask my wife. She'll tell you. I volunteer as much as I possibly can in this town, and it's what makes this town the greatest little town in the land, not to quote a very famous person. But I like to lead by example. I volunteer for anything that I am able to, that time will allow. And I think that a lot of Milltown people, residents here, do the same. It's great to have, it's what brings people to this town. It's what makes people want to make it and continue to make it the 12th most popular town in New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Rusidi?
With their countless hours and dedicated service, I'd like to see if we have, if we can implement a volunteer of the month, every month, whether it be one from the fire department, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, PTA, whatever, anyone who volunteers their time should be recognized and will be recognized.
And finally, Mr. Farkas?
Yes, thank you. After doing this forum for so many times, I think every time I've done this, I've had the comment, "Volunteers are like gold." They are precious. It's the lifeblood of our town. It's what makes our town what it is. As a longtime volunteer myself, that is what got me involved into politics. So volunteerism, while it's rewarding in itself, can hopefully lead on to bigger and better things, which has, in my case, is what led me to be here tonight. And again, Milltown, a friendly community, is not friendly without volunteers.
Thank you for those answers. Our next question, and I'll be going to Mr. Rusidi first on this one. In June of this year, a building located on Ford Avenue was demolished. To this day, the rubble left from the demolition remains. If you oversaw the demolition process, how would you have let it?
How would I have let it? Right now...
Or how, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time, we misread this one word. How would you have handled it?
I think we would have handled it exactly the same way we did. We had every agency, we had a representative from every agency there from the state level down. They did everything according to codes. We had Middlesex County Hazmat, we had Middlesex County Health Department there, controlling the air quality. There was no contaminants, as certain individuals claimed. The rubble and everything, if I'm not mistaken, is under court order and will be cleaned up, and the rest of the buildings will be demolished as that court order dictates. In June, I believe he pled guilty to the, what was it? Whatever it was. And as a result, certain things will be done, and everything will be done according to federal regulations and county and state regulations.
Okay. Mr. Farkas?
Everyone has seen the flyer that went out. You know, there's an old saying about, "Don't believe anything you see in half of what you hear." Well, the flyer tells the truth. No safety precautions were taken. I can tell you that because I checked. I checked with the EPA. First of all, the EPA requires notification 10 days prior to any work that gets started that they are notified of what project, what's going to go on at the site. Never done. Follow best-practice methods of demolition. Never done. Notify residents that the construction will be taking place. Never done. Any kind of dust that's created needs to be wet down with a water truck. Never done. Permits need to be obtained. Never done. Perform a hazard assessment to be sure that there's no damaging carcinogens in the area. Never done. And finally, the last thing was, all utilities need to be disconnected prior to demolition. Never done. Thank you.
Okay. And next, Mr. Revulinski?
For those of you on... For those of you unfamiliar with the building demolition at Ford Avenue, it basically demolished itself for the most part. We had an imminent hazard there, which didn't leave time with the safety of our residents at risk to go back and do a bunch of investigation and take time and notify a whole bunch of agencies who were already on board. The EPA has already done studies to prove that the facility was non-hazardous, non-toxic, not a superfund. There was minimal dust created. In fact, I believe there was more when the building collapsed upon itself. So what would I have done different? I probably would have tried to get the negligent and absentee owner to pay for it. That's it.
Thank you. And Mr. Legati.
Question is, what I would have done if there? Well, I would have notified the public and business owners that the demolition was going to occur. I would have had the proper permits pulled. Mr. Revolinski said that eminent domain was declared. Yes, eminent domain was declared. You have two days. This was 45 days later. Eminent domain was the parking lot of United Way. That was taken care of. Eminent domain plays a part in here, that they had the time to get the proper permits, notify all of Milltown of a hazard that might be there.
Eminent hazard.
At the very, at the very least, I went to a council meeting and I put up the analogy, I go into my garage, I pull a blanket off a shelf, and I get dust. Council knocked down a whole building, and when I asked a particular council member, was there any dust? Absolutely no dust. I find that very, very hard to believe. All those people on Ford Avenue were subject to those hazards.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next question is, and again, I will start with this point. Mr. Revolinski will be next. How do you feel about the charges being brought against the owner of Ford Avenue?
Mr. Berger is no friend of Milltown. Everyone in Milltown knows that. The charges, as far as I'm concerned, are not enough. He has managed to stain our little town. He has managed to cost us an exorbitant amount of money. If we could do more in the legal system, I would take every advantage and do whatever I could to make his life more difficult.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Revolinski.
It seems like we're on the same page here. Unfortunately, the charges that were brought against him just aren't enough. It's a good step. It's a step in the right direction, but without us expending a massive amount of legal fees, we've got to tread lightly here for the betterment of the borough and not to waste too much money fighting a battle that we may possibly not win.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas.
Sure. Mr. Berger owes the borough of Milltown about $1 million. He was charged with a disorderly persons complaint, and he was fined $1,000. By my math, that's .0001% of the money that he owes the borough of Milltown that he made pony up. So I wouldn't get too excited that some great things were done there. There's a long road to haul here with Mr. Berger. I've dealt with him for about the last nine years through various degrees, and, no, I'm sorry, we've got a long way to go.
Okay. And finally, Mr. Rusidi.
We've dealt with him for nine years and gotten nowhere. His criminal charges were long overdue. Unfortunately, we're bound by a court order, and there's only so much we can do. The $1 million that he owes us, yes, we're actively seeking that. There's nothing we can do at this point. Unfortunately.
Okay. Very well. We got everybody on that one? Our next question, we will, do we have time for one or two more? Okay, I've got two more questions. So, okay. Our next question, we will be starting with Mr. Rusidi first, just to let you know. This year, the current council voted in favor of reducing the amount of council meetings by 50%. Would you have voted in favor of such action? Why or why not?
I'll reserve my opinion until the completion of this trial basis is over. We will revisit it and see where we stand at that point.
And then, Mr. Farkas.
Sure. The current council, while they cut the amount of meetings in half, from the best of my recollection, did not cut the amount of money that they were paid. So essentially, by doing that, they voted themselves a 50% raise. You do half the work for the same money, that's a 50% raise. In this era of tough economic times, I don't know, I think I got a 2% raise last year, but they voted themselves a 50% raise. In my opinion, it should be three meetings a month, two council meetings, and one work session for the council to get together to talk about important issues that can be discussed at the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Revolinski.
Well, I'm willing to forego any sort of compensation I get for being on council. I'm here for the right reasons, which are to benefit the town. Does it seem to be working? Yes. I understand they're on a trial period right now, but I think it also provides the council members time to further evaluate these issues before bringing them to the borough and really get some more information.
Okay, thank you. And last, Mr. Legati.
Reducing the council meetings to one meeting a month. What I think everybody missed here is some transparency to the Milltown residents. You took away half the meetings for Milltown residents to voice their opinion, come to meetings, hear about what's going on, and letting you know how they feel. I know it's on a trial basis and things, you know, you have to let them play out, but I find it hard to believe that you can conduct business as efficiently with one meeting a month, getting stuff paid. Just the day-to-day operation with just one meeting a month is probably taxing on the whole council and the borough workers here. So I would not be in favor of it, and mainly because you took away transparency from the Milltown residents.
We are done with the audience portion, audience question section of tonight's debate, and we will take a five-minute break to allow the candidates to prepare their closing statements. Okay. Welcome back. Thank you again for being here at the Milltown Borough Candidates Debate. We are about to now have our closing statements. Our first candidate who will be talking with us is Richard Revolinski.
During the break, I began reflecting on what we've discussed tonight and what we've heard. We've heard a lot of accomplishments from our fellow candidates here on a dedication. It reminds me that Milltown was not made great overnight. Milltown is great because of the hard work and dedication from current members in town, past residents, and future. I mentioned earlier, when I was a child, my father ran for Borough Council. I was fortunate to hear the iconic phrase, which you've all heard tonight, "The greatest little town in the land," firsthand from the booming, powerful voice of Dave Grochmann. I witnessed the hard work of many people toward the betterment of Milltown. I didn't hear many "I dids," rather, "we did." It was a lesson that I learned very well as a young age, dedication to the community. Think back to when I was about eight years old, staying up late to decorate the Fourth of July float with my parents. I don't remember the theme that year. It was a flatbed truck, white banners down the side, and my father's letters in light blue letters. On the bed was to stand a five-foot-tall recreation of the presidential seal. The seal was made on a two-by-four frame wrapped in chicken wire, and the colors were made up of hand-stuffed individual-colored napkins pushed inside. We painstakingly cut out 50 white paper stars and placed them around the hand-painted eagle. As the hours went on and I grew tired, I remember asking my mother why she was working so hard to make this float and why not just pay someone else to do it? She reminded me not to cut corners, and she told me I would realize tomorrow. The next day, when I woke up and I looked outside, I saw the float. It was breathtaking. That day, I carried my father's sign down Main Street, filled with pride to be walking in front of our float. That night, as we watched the fireworks at Borough Park, my mother asked me if I thought we should have had someone else make the float for us, to which I responded, "No." So I leave you tonight with a quote from President Theodore Roosevelt, "A man dedicated his life to the pursuit of personal development and overcoming obstacles both politically and personally, which gave him the perseverance to set our nation on the right path toward prosperity. Far and away, he said, the best prize that life has to offer is the chance to work hard at work worth doing. Make no promises tonight other than the promise to work hard for the residents of the borough of Milltown. Do not seek the office of counsel for personal gain, but rather the opportunity to utilize my abilities for the betterment of Milltown, so that it may remain the greatest little town in the land for your children, my children, and for generations to come."
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Our next candidate will be Nick Legati.
I would like to thank everyone involved for tonight's event, all the people who took the time to come down, and all the people who tuned in on Channel 15. Well, the questions have been asked and answered. All the literature is out there for your review. Now it is up to you, the Milltown resident, to vote on who you want to be, who you want to be the next Milltown Councilman and Mayor. This may be my first time running for office, but by no means is local government a mystery to me. I have four years' volunteer experience on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, where I have met all different residents and learned all different zoning ordinance that I have had the pleasure of making decisions and voting on. As the Mayor's designate to the Middlesex County Housing and Community Development Committee, I have attended county-level meetings and voiced my views for Milltown to ensure our senior citizen center gets all the funds possible and not allocated to other municipalities. Serving on the Recreation Advisory Committee for the last five years has prepared me for having a working knowledge of its budgeted events and working with Milltown employees. Serving on the Milltown Shade Tree Committee, we heard from many residents who had been issued permits for trees to be removed, and I worked together with council representatives in 2012 and 2014 and was able to remove 75 trees, some of which were issued permits back in 2008. Enough about my resume on how I have the local experience needed to be your next Councilman. I want this job because I know I can do it well. I know I am the best person for the job. I can work well with both parties, Democrats as well as Republicans. It all boils down to not being political, just make the best decisions for all of Milltown. My goal is to keep this great little town thriving so that all Milltown children and grandchildren can take advantage of some great small-town values, something I aspired to when I moved here 15 years ago and love passing on to my children, values like honesty, compassion, and generosity. I can only make one campaign promise. If elected, I will make every decision by thinking of this great municipality first and foremost. My two running mates' local government experience is unmatched by anyone else in this election. Their willingness to go beyond and over the top to do the right thing for Milltown makes me proud to ask you on Tuesday, November 3rd, this election day, to vote not only for me, Nick Legati, but cast your vote for Randy Farkas for Borough Council and reelect Mayor Eric Steber for Mayor. Thank you. God bless, and good night.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Neil Rusidi.
Thank you. I would like to thank Russ Einbinder, Rob, and the entire cable committee for putting their work together for this forum tonight. I would also like to thank our lovely moderator tonight, as well as my opponents. I also want to thank the viewers at home for taking the time to sit down and listen to what all of the candidates have to say. You all already listened to us on the issues and heard what we have to say. There is no reason to repeat or recap everything you heard tonight. Instead, I want to tell you more about me. I proudly served my country in the military and did a 13-month tour, the war tour in Iraq. I am honored to say that I helped defend the rights and privileges we all have as Americans today, as well as defend us against terrorist activity. When I came home, I wanted to continue to serve and protect, which is why I re-entered into a career in law enforcement with the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office. In the course of my job, I protect all life. I do not pick and choose. I carried the same principle when I was elected to council three years ago. I believe that when you are elected, you must represent all of the residents, not just the ones you think voted for you or gave money to your campaign. It doesn't matter if you are Republican or Democrat or Independent. Once elected, you must do what is right for the residents of Milltown. I am not a career politician. I am your typical neighbor going about my life. I work, take care of my family, and worry about the future of our town. I am the guy next door that you can call when you need help or just want to hang out and have a few laughs. I am someone who speaks their mind and will not be told how to vote on any issue. I personally feel it is okay if a council doesn't agree. In fact, it's better government when there are different voices to be heard and to be heard publicly. Not every council person is going to agree on every issue, just like every resident is not going to agree on every issue. I speak our minds, and we don't try to yell or scream to try to force our opinions on others. In the end, when the vote is over, we shake hands afterwards and move on to the next issue facing the town. There are no hard feelings, no backstabings, just business. I don't want Milltown to go back to the old ways and the old politics of party politics. Milltown must come first, and decisions have to be made on what is best for Milltown, not a political party, not a political contributor, and certainly not what the county wants. I am proud to say that in the last nine months, this current council has put aside politics and worked for a better Milltown. There are no secret meetings, no "do not talk to that person," and this council truly listens to the residents. This council is active in the community and works as a team. There's an old saying, "There is no 'I' in team." And that is the truth. To truly get the job done, you need people that can work with everyone and be trusted by everyone. There are a lot of issues facing Milltown, and we need people like myself and my running mates, Rich Revolinski and Ron Dixon, to help keep Milltown moving forward. I ask for your support on November 3rd. Thank you. God bless.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from Randy Farkas.
Thank you. Perseverance is defined as a steady persistence in a course of action, a purpose, a state, et cetera, especially in spite of difficulties, obstacles, or discouragement. That pretty much sums up serving as an elected official in Milltown. If perseverance is not one of your strong points, you will not be successful on council. I call your attention to that word, perseverance, because that one word defines who I am. I'm a two-term Councilman that has worked aggressively to represent your thoughts and views, to represent what is best for our town and our residents. I have lived through the ups and downs of politics for the better part of 12 years, sometimes winning, sometimes losing, but always learning. And yet, I'm here tonight asking for your support once again. A lot of people told me I was crazy for running again, and you've probably heard the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. Well, with your support, the result will be different. The point is that I enjoy serving on council. I find it very rewarding, and when you can accomplish what you set out to do for the benefit of your neighbors. Challenging? Yes. Frustrating? Always. But I'm passionate about making our town the best it can be. Milltown should be in the news for positive things, like being the 12th best small town in New Jersey to raise a family, and not the embarrassing events in the news over the last month. Those events define one individual, not us, not our town. We need to endeavor to be the little town that could, not the town that could not. What was once a dream just four years ago is a reality now, that our new substation is near completion. Land was purchased last year to move the Public Works Building that has sat way too long in the floodplain, but unfortunately, no progress has been made this year. Lighted crosswalks are located at key intersections throughout our town to assist our crossing guards and to ensure your children's safety as they walk along Main Street, thanks to last year's council. I took on the task of resurrecting our water relining and looping program to eliminate rusty water for our residents, but sadly, to date, nothing has been done to improve water quality by this year's council. You should be better represented and demand more from your elected officials. The people you elect should be held to a higher standard, and those that fail to live up to that standard should not be reelected. On November 3rd, reelect Mayor Eric Steber, whose long list of accomplishments are well-known, and elect Nick Legati, who has accepted the challenge to bring his can-do attitude and proactive thinking to council. And me. My name is Randy Farkas. I... I bring experience, passion, and most of all, perseverance. Milltown Strong is not just a slogan. For us, it's a way of life. Thank you and good night.
And we are done. Thanks to all of our candidates in particular for putting themselves up for this and for being with us tonight and having a very, very good discussion. And finally, want to thank again our timekeeper, Russ Tangen, and our press representative, And finally, thanks to Milltown Local Access Channel 15 for organizing and sponsoring this event. Good night.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.